So it's been pointed out on social media that today is the two year anniversary of the school board meeting in August of 2021 here in Chesterfield. That was the school board meeting that I think a lot of people are saying was the start of the back and forth. It was the late night meeting that went for hours and hours, uh, almost to midnight before a vote to maintain masking was taken. And in that same meeting, the transgender policy of Chesterfield County that was in compliance with Northam's policy that was developed with the best interest and care of all students in mind was also enacted. Uh, in those two years, it's been a constant back and forth push with others within this community and all over the country. So I guess that's why people are making videos and posts today about what's going on in Chesterfield. I might as well as also. Cause see, two years ago in August, wasn't my first time in front of the school board. Uh, I actually had thought I was done. My introduction to school board activities, uh, talking to the school board advocating in front of the school board went back to during COVID. Um, I do IT operation readiness by trade. Part of that is facilities readiness and a number of other things. One of the things I had done working with educators and others was try to put together a proposal. A proposal of what returning to school in person safely would look like. We put together that proposal. We had a, a full version, which is a pretty lengthy document. And then of course the PowerPoint so we could easily present it. And we put that forward to the school board. Uh, and also talked to different, uh, educational unions as well, uh, who were interested in the work we were doing. Uh, some of the things we suggested were accepted, some were not. And, um, some of the things I would have liked to have seen done based on best practices as defined by the CDC up to May of 2020, uh, before they were pressured by the then, uh, administration to change it. Um, some of those best practices were not accepted, were not taken. Things like more ventilation and more open airway. Were never done. Things that would have fundamentally changed a little bit of what we did in the classroom. Uh, more outdoor education time, things like that. People seemed too concerned with getting back to normal rather than using, uh, looking at the pandemic and saying, okay, here's what we've been doing wrong all this time. Let's get back to something that works better. People are afraid of progress and I think that's what we see as the story progresses. So I thought I was done. Uh, Chesterfield County had gone back to school for full time. Uh, the schools were completely reopened in person. Uh, the vaccine was available to those, uh, to, to the general public by the summer of 2021. Uh, so responsible people, unless you had a younger child, responsible parents had gotten their children vaccinated. And masking was there to protect, uh, those with weakened immune systems and also protect, uh, transmission, uh, even after the vaccine was applied, transmission could still take place. So we wanted to be sure we were being as safe and sane as possible. So I was sitting in a CVS parking lot in June, 2021. And I heard a news story on the radio about a recent school board meeting uh, that had erupted into chaos up in Northern Virginia. And then right on the tail of that, I heard about a school board meeting in Chesterfield where folks were bringing up this hokey, you know, manufactured CRT scandal that Chris Ruffo had created. Uh, and trying to argue against that in Chesterfield County despite the fact, as one of our school board members pointed out, CRT is not part of the K through 12 curriculum anywhere in Virginia. Uh, but of course it was a manufactured panic. It was a manufactured attempt to try to attack education because as Steve Bannon had said a year earlier, the school boards and the local elections and the local offices were the next front on the right wing war on our democracy. And especially education, there are billions of dollars to go into education. And there's, and a lot of those people who are putting money into these things would love nothing more than that billions of dollars of public funding to be funneled through vouchers and privatization into private pockets. So any way they can attack education and destroy public education is going to be something they want to do. So Chris Ruffo came up with a CRT thing, which allowed him to get his, uh, alt-right conservative talking points in front of people in a way that seemed palatable. It gave an excuse, um, for parents who thought, you know, for, for people who thought that they were, oh, I'm generally a reasonable person to go ahead and start blowing some pretty serious racist dog whistles with this whole CRT, uh, bullshit that they came up with. And when I heard that that was actually being discussed in a school board meeting in my county, I decided in August, when the next school board meeting was, cause we take July off, I would be there. Cause I wasn't going to let what happened in Loudon, what happened in Fairfax and what happened all over Florida happen in my county. So I started talking to other folks and, and we kind of put together a, a bit of a rally to protect kids. For an event for the August school board meeting. The school board meeting that everyone's talking about was two years ago today. And that's kind of where I got involved and had to make the choice that yeah, I'm going to have to try to attend as many of these school board meetings as possible, if anything, to make sure that those pushing those conservative talking points. Those attacks on education, those attacks on public education, make sure they don't have the only voice in the room. So that's what I did. That's what I've been doing. And, and, and albeit I want to be very clear. Because I've talked with parents on that side. I've talked with people on that side. I believe that many of them sincerely have the best interests of students in mind. However, their biases and their approach is a results in what is harmful. They have been misled by the Chris Ruffos of the world into believing the lies that are being spouted at them by the Steve Bannons and Chris Ruffos, um, across the country by right wing media across the country. They buy into it. So they think that they're protecting kids. They think that they're protecting parents' rights. And something I really want to point out about this whole parents' rights movement that we've heard about for the last two years is that it's bullshit. It's, it's the same thing as in the 1860s when the South would say states' rights. Well, we gotta protect our state's rights or, or when the, um, the lost cause people talk about all the civil war was about states' rights. States' rights to do what? Parents' rights to do what? Because the reality is, the reality is, is that as a parent, you always had a right. Your rights were not being denied. Nothing was being hidden from you. Those were all lies being told to you by right wing media. The reality is that for seven years, I ran a parent volunteer program here in Chesterfield County at my kid's school. The reality is that any dad who wanted to be involved and have their rights could volunteer and spend an entire day in their kid's elementary school in the classroom where instruction was taking place. They had, could go to PTA meetings and talk to the faculty about that instruction. They could reach out. I've reached out to teachers specifically about issues on assignments. That's not being hidden from you. But what isn't happening is the idea that, oh, we're going to let you, the loud parent, dictate what every student in the school is going to hear. What you want for your kid is up to you. What you want for every kid out there, that's not to you. You don't get to parent my kids. And your cries of parents' rights, to me, I often hear, I want to tell your kids how to grow up. So when they talk about, oh, I don't want to hear CRT in the classroom. Well, what if I do? Forget the fact that it's not in the schools. It's not in K through 12 education. What if I do? We got that son of a bitch in Florida banning AP history courses for every student in Florida schools because some of these parents bought into the right wing lies and think that it's harmful. So they deny to every parent, where are the rights of the parents who want their kid to have a full education? Where are those kids' rights? And not only that, there are parents' rights. Absolutely. Parents have rights to, uh, you know, direct how they're going to raise their children. But you know what? You know who else has rights? Do you know who else are human beings? The children themselves. And one of the things I keep on hearing by these folks that say parents' rights, parents' rights is a denial of a child's rights. I saw just recently on Facebook, somebody from that side saying that the phrase every child deserves a loving and assuring parent is not pro-parent right language. So you're telling me that saying that children deserve to be loved is too woke for them. Too woke. Love is too woke. Acceptance is too woke. Supporting is too woke. The fact of the matter is every time I hear the phrase woke used as a way to insult or bring something down, what I'm really hearing someone say is that being a decent human being is unacceptable. That we have to rip out our empathy, rip out our humanity and cast it upon the floor. Because a practical view is not a woke view and practical isn't woke. Empathy, humanity and love. That's what I have been fighting for this whole time. Empathy, humanity and love. So two years ago today, we had this safe and inclusive rally at, before the school board meeting. Then we have this massively long school board meeting talking about, are we going back to school with masks on our faces or not? Talking about, now let's get very clear, talking about whether or not we're willing to accept dead family members in exchange for mild discomfort. Well, the mask fight, the reopen fight, of course, led to that mask fight. And the sides were already drawn up. The mask fight led to the vaccine fight and the very disingenuous complains that, oh, don't segregate my child because of their vaccine status. There, i- if you want to try to draw a comparison between racial segregation over traits that someone can't help and separating less safe people from people who have been vaccinated and are less likely to pass an infectious disease. That is just absolutely shameful. But we heard it. So the vaccine debate was starting to peter out. But that energy was there. And the, the right wing media pundits knew it was there and they wanted to feed on it. So they fed CRT to the angry crowd and they grabbed it and they gobbled it up and they ate it. And then eventually CRT started to run out of steam. They needed something else. So they threw books. 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 You can't have the books I disagree with on your shelves. My kid can't walk into a library if a book I don't approve of is in that library. Never mind the fact that in Chesterfield County, you absolutely can opt in to notification of every book your child checks out. You want to talk about parents' rights. A parent already had the right to see what their child was looking at at the library. That wasn't enough because again, they didn't want to stop their own kids from accessing these books. They wanted to stop your kids from accessing these books. They wanted to tell you what your child could read. So they started pushing this book thing. They had a big, uh, school board meeting where they read explicit passages from books they deemed inappropriate, out loud in front of kids who were under the age approved for those books. Because these books were in the school library. So of course we've got to just shame the schools. Never mind the fact that some of these books might be, you know, books for high school students. Books for junior high students. They're reading it in front of an audience of everybody, including elementary school students. They're making the false claim that these books don't belong anywhere in a K through 12. Well, that's a pretty big category. You got K through three. K through third, third through six, six through eight, eighth through 12. And yeah, there are books sitting in a high school library that probably shouldn't be sitting in a kindergarten library. Absolutely. But the idea that because it's not appropriate here, you can't have it anywhere is just an excuse to censor. And do they ever? Because the books that get challenged in this country, the books that are being challenged by groups like Moms for Liberty and other groups across here and even groups in this county. Well, you keep on hearing the same passages and the same handful of pages from the same handful of books, four or five books. Four or five pages from these books, out of the thousands of pages in these books combined, out of the hundreds of thousands of books in school libraries, out of the millions of books in this country, it's the same four or five books you hear when these arguments are made because these arguments are just there to get the foot in the door to ease the process to ban everything else. So you, you put up a picture of an explicit frame from a graphic novel. It's high school appropriate. It's sitting in a high school. And you show that graphic novel explicit frame and you say, well, this is why we need to make it easier to ban books. And people say, well, yeah, we gotta get rid of that. That's, that's unacceptable. And then you use the new process that takes every book that refers to any queer person. Any book that talks about racial justice. Any book that talks about injustice in our current systems. And you ban those as well. And I know you've seen the videos, hallways in Florida schools filled with books in boxes, shelves emptied. And that's the result. You get your foot in the door and ease the process to ban books across a county or a state with these extreme examples, these lost leaders. And then before you know it, the irony of ironies, books like Fahrenheit 451 are being banned. And that's why, you know, people don't understand, well, why do you care so much about these books? I care about the worst books. Because you have to go through the worst books to get to the best books. And I know that they want the best books off those shelves. So in the middle of this whole book fight and CRT fight, you've got the Family Foundation and American Defending Freedom, two right wing, uh, evangelical Christian aligned groups. Putting together model legislation and building a new anti-trans moral panic because this is all about building moral panics. If you guys remember, um, the album lyrics, Moral Panic and the album censorship, Moral Panic, the Tipper Gore had going until she was humiliated by Dee Snider. That's a moral panic. If you remember the Satanic Panic that resulted in 2020 stories about the dangers of Dungeons and Dragons. And, and oh wow, people who play Dungeons and Dragons are dangerous and unhinged. Um, that was a manufactured moral panic. And everything you're seeing today in these social things are more manufactured moral panics. And we're going to look back on this. The same way we look back at Tipper Gore or the whole Dungeons and Dragons Satanic Panic or Joseph McCarthy or the comic book code, we'd look back on this in, in the future with shame and derision. And we will mock those who are pushing that panic today. But the moral panic is here right now. It was developed. It was researched. It was field tested. They had survey after survey after survey. Because American Defending Freedom, they tried a model legislation in 2018 in about 20 states to deny bathroom access of the, of people's identified gender to people across different states. And only one state passed it. That was North Carolina. And the backlash against North Carolina for passing that was so great that North Carolina had withdrawn it because the economic damage that they were experiencing was unheard of. So they pulled it back and they went back to the drawing board in 2018 and they said, we gotta find a new way. And there are emails that document this exact conversation that have leaked out. There is, and I don't want to say leak like all crazy leak. No, no, I actually have the files. The Atlantic covered this story uh, pretty thoroughly, very recently. Email files back and forth. Um, they did surveys. They had focus groups. And they figured out finally that it was the athletics. That was the key issue that could get people to turn against the trans community. It was athletics. It was athletic. People have an, people think, you know, have a sense of fairness and the idea that, um, you'd have a very masculine man going in and competing in girls' sports. Well, that doesn't seem fair. Never mind the fact the International Olympic Committee has already done all the research and all the studies on this. And they already have policies that allow trans athletes to compete in their chosen gender. Um, in their identified gender. Never mind the fact that IOC itself has already figured out this problem. Never mind the fact that Virginia High School League already had policies that took into account things like, um, how long does a testosterone advantage last in somebody who's in HRT, uh, on a male to female transition? How long does that advantage remain there scientifically? Never mind that all that work's been done. People don't have the time to go research all that. So they listen to what they're being told. What they're being told by right wing media is this, this myth. This myth that, that these, these macho manly men are pretending to be trans women so they can win at sports. Which is patently ridiculous, especially when you talk about high school kids and middle school kids who are so desperate not to be made fun of. Do you think, do you think with all the stigma around it, that someone would go ahead and identify as trans when they're not, just so they can get an advantage in sports? When you look at Virginia itself and athletics, you see that maybe four or five students ever have applied for any kind of waiver to the Virginia High School League's transgender policy. But that was enough. It was enough of an issue in theory to get the foot in the door. And what we saw afterwards was more lies, more misinformation, more bullshit being spread around. You know, all of a sudden Fox News is talking about transgender issues, transgender issues, transgender issues 20 times in a single cycle in a single day. And that saturation is an oversaturation intentionally. And now you start hearing people saying, well, I never used to hear about it. Now I'm hearing about it all the time. It must be something that the, the left is pushing. No, 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 the left isn't pushing it. You're hearing about it all the time because there's a conscious effort to bring it to the forefront of the topics. So as a result, what you get thanks to American Defending Freedom and the Family Foundation and their tireless efforts cooperating with, with right wing media like Fox News and Steve Bannon and Chris Ruffo. And, uh, politicians who are more than happy to grab onto social wedge issues because they have domestic policy issues that, that, you know, are in the toilet. You know, they have no clue on how to run this country. So if they can get the social issues going, people won't look at their failures on their own issues. So you have folks like Ron DeSantis out there really just amping up. I mean, heck, his attack on immigrants was starting to flag. So he had to figure out a new other group to target. Like trans kids were right there, right there waiting for him. And so he did it. He did it. The Don't Say Gay bill. He did it with, um, the additional policies he passed. And through all that, we had a governor's election taking place in Virginia. And see, this is where it's really bad. Because at the same time that the right wing media is doing all it can, funded by the, you know, working with the Family Foundation and American Defending Freedom and working with, um, being funded by groups like Heritage Foundation, the Koch Brothers, et cetera. While that's all taking place, the Virginia Democratic Party is sitting on their heels. And they're nominating a milquetoast, no one cared former governor to run again in 2021 over two very good candidates. The democratic establishment goes ahead and nominates Terry McAuliffe. I mean, and they basically forced him into the nomination. Because people who knew better knew that nobody was going to get excited about Terry McAuliffe. And we needed people to get excited to vote. No one's getting excited for T Mac. Half the people who voted for him grudgingly when he first ran, just, you know, still considered him a carpetbagger to begin with. But they did it. They nominated Terry McAuliffe. And Terry McAuliffe thought, hey, Virginia went easy for Biden. He didn't think he had a campaign. He didn't even try. He didn't even prep on the issues that were key. So he's sitting in a interview. Not an interview, a debate with Glenn Youngkin, a businessman, Glenn Youngkin, a billionaire, Glenn Youngkin. Everything we should be angry about. A privatizer. He's sitting in a debate with Glenn Youngkin and the issue of parents' rights and education comes up. And T Mac says the dumbest fucking thing I have ever heard anyone say on a stage. When he says parents should be telling teachers how to, uh, uh, teach their kids. No. Cause I'm on the teacher's side. I'm on the side of public education. And even I know that the first teacher for any kid is their parent. You are your kid's first and most important teacher. So that answer was just the dumbest thing he ever did. And what it did is it revitalized Youngkin's failing campaign. And it walked him and a Republican majority in the House of Delegates of Virginia right into office. We held the Senate and that was it. And thank God, because what happened after that was Glenn Youngkin went and he tried to reverse every bit of progress we had made in this state. Was Glenn Youngkin went and he tried to reverse every bit of progress we had made in this state. Schools masking policies, he cast cast them aside, unilaterally. Against the Virginia Constitution tried to wipe them out. He stepped in. He decided to postpone. Nominated some nobody. To run the new Board of Education, who then said, oh, we're not gonna actually approve the history standards. That had been worked on for two years at this point and just basically needed a rubber stamp to be approved. Okay, we're gonna delay, we're gonna do a couple modifications to him and then she came back with this piece of garbage. Replaced a four hundred page document with an eighty page document written by a conservative activist group. And said, this is the new history policy, well, that failed because it was too blatantly obvious. It was never supposed to pass anyway, so that. Uh head of the Board of Education, she stepped down in shame and disgrace, of course, and they brought in someone new and they brought in a new history standard. And because it was the less bad, it was less bad than the one before it, everyone's like, oh, yeah, we'll take this one, okay. And we still have a whitewashed history standard now in the state of Virginia. And then he went and replaced most of the Board of Education with his own handpicked, there's only one person who wasn't. Youngkin handpicked on the Board of Education today. And as far as the whole anti-trans moral panic. And the policy that protects trans kids that we passed in twenty twenty-one. Well, he went ahead in July. And said, well, we're gonna enact a new model policy that completely invalidates and all schools are gonna have to deny it. The protective policy and put this new policy in that forces teachers to out their students. It denies parents' rights to have their children's transition respected. Because it specifies, oh, you have to use the bathroom, goes with your birth certificate. So it's social transition completely out the window. And it uh keeps. Teachers from bonding with their kids by using their preferred names. What this policy does is it drives a wedge between the student and the teacher. And puts every teacher at risk who tries to use compassion in the classroom. Which doesn't surprise me at all, because again and again and again, what we've seen from the right is the attempt. To make teaching harder. Pay less, harder to do. So that more teachers quit, because the more teachers quit, the more crisis and chaos you can create in education. The more you can point to public education and say, this has failed. And the more you can point to public education and say, this has failed, the easier it becomes for you to take that public education money. And through vouchers or charter schools, hand that public education money to private vendors. And that public education money is the real prize, the billions of dollars that are spent on public education every year. Are billions of dollars that could be going into private pockets. If they could just get public education to fail to the point that people get fed up. So I am sorry. Trans kids are being targeted. And being harmed and being subjected to conditions that may make them leave them homeless or considering suicide. Because people want that public education money. People of color minorities are having their history erased or denied. Because people want that public education money, all of these moral panics, all of these activities are all about that money. And a billionaire like Glenn Youngkin. Is exactly the kind of person who wants access to that money. So two years. What have I learned in two years, what I've learned in two years is you have to stand. For the people who can't stand up. For themselves because they're too few, they're unknown, they're misunderstood and they're not heard of. I would rather have a trans person stand up and speak for themselves. And they do, God love them, but the truth of the matter is they're so few. That they become an easy target to overwhelm. Unless people stand with them. The whole idea is divide and conquer, but if we stand together for each other. Regardless of our color or our history or our identity. We stand together for empathy and decency. That we can win. Because in the end, they don't care, the people funding this, the people behind this, the parents might. Like I said, I think some of these parents are mistaken in their conclusions, but they have good intentions. But the people funding it, the people running groups like Turning Point USA, Parents Defending Education, Moms for Liberty. Uh uh American, American Defending Freedom, the Heritage Foundation, PragerU, those people. They don't care about your social issues, they don't care about your wedge issues. They care about that public education money going into private pockets. So really, ask yourself. When you're taking a stand, are you taking a stand for what is right and what is just? Or are you taking a stand for lining a billionaire's pockets?